Anyone for or against the request will be asked to come forward to the microphone and express their opinion. Each side will have a total of ten minutes to speak. Plats, rezonings, revised master plans, street renaming, and text amendments require a public hearing, and once the public hearing is completed, planning commission members will deliberate and render their decision. Planning commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. The members of the planning commission are Frank Cook, Chairman, Ann Clemmons, Vice Chairman, Buddy Hardwick, Cruz Reeves, Reginald Hawkins, who's absent, Reggie Mantooth, Reggie Dunn, James Reed, and Mr. Kippe Tate. The members of the planning control staff are, I don't see Tommy Tyson or James Center, Tanya Ingram and Jovan Hines, Recording Secretaries. Members and petitioners are requested to please speak directly into the microphone. The minutes are recorded for legal purposes, and this is the only way to accurately pick up audio. Tonight, we have eight members present, and it takes five votes to pass a motion. Because of the number of board members present, if you wish to delay your request, please let us know when your request is announced. Mr. Chairman?
Who's going? Are you reading tonight?
I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Item number one, presented by Hester Davis. A request-
All minutes? All business?
Sir?
We didn't approve the minutes.
All right, we'll approve the minutes. All right. Minutes from the last meeting, did everybody get a copy? Did we all read the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, minutes are approved. Thank you.
Item number one, presented by Hester Davis, requesting to rezone one parcel of land containing 10.86 acres on the south side of Williams Drive across from Hell's Lane from R-50 to Ag, from R-50 and M3 to an Ag 1 district.
All right. Ms. Davis, I understand you're here, or somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you pick that up? I'm assuming you can. Okay.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and make your request, your presentation.
Yes, sir. I'm speaking on behalf of my elderly uncle, who was living in New York, and we were all born on the air property at 321 Williams Drive. He has moved back down there, and he wants to get a trailer and put on the land. And I do understand that we can't get more than one trailer at this point for, to put on the land. So, and that's all we were looking for anyway. He's moved back home and wanna just live there. He's 71, and would like to just, you know, live out his days on the land now. And basically, that's it. We've already had some work done. We had the surveyor come out, and they surveyed the land and everything. And so whatever else we need to do, we wanna know what that is. And like I said, it's just him and his son, who is 21. They'll be living in the trailer. We already have one trailer on the land and a house that had caught fire. It needs to be fixed. I don't know if they're gonna fix that up or take it down, but we're not planning on, like, putting multiple trailers there.
Okay, but there's already one trailer there now, or one mobile home?
There's one mobile home that's been there for years and years.
Okay.
So, he's, that, that belongs to my other elderly uncle.
Okay.
So, he wants to get one and put there for him and his son.
Okay.
The trailer, is it on the property you're trying to rezone, or is that, is that, is that the trailer that looks like to the west of the piece of property?
The trailer that he, he's planning on, he's planning on getting a trailer, if you all approve of.
Yes, ma'am.
He, the trailer's not there yet, but I have been speaking to sellers of trailers, you know, companies. So, you know, we're just waiting to see what you guys say. So-
Is there a trailer on the property next to, to this piece?
So, what it is, is there's a trailer on the property next to the house. The house, the house either will be removed, or it'll be in the middle of, of, but they, I think my uncle is planning on removing the house and putting a trailer where the house is, because the house caught a fire and it's condemned now.
Yes, ma'am. Is it water and sewer there, or is it well water and septic tank?
It's septic tank, but it's, I think it's city water. I'm not sure about the water part. It's septic, though, I do know that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Because my other uncle have a septic tank in his, for his trailer.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a trailer on that lot.
Yes, sir.
There's an existing trailer there now. It's not next door to it. It's on the lot we're discussing.
Yes, sir. It's, it's on the lot. Yes, sir.
So this'll be the second trailer you're requesting?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my question-
The other trailer, oh, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
The, where's that existing trailer now? Where's it located on the lot?
It's kinda by the end of the, by the end of the lot, to the left end.
And where do you plan to put the second trailer?
To the, to the right of, like, downtown, to the right. We don't, we don't know how many feet you require them to be a part, but like I said, right now, to the right of that trailer, it's a house that my grandma had, and it caught a fire in, I think, 2018.
So is that, is that house in the middle of the, it's kinda like in the middle of the lot, closest to the road?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next trailer is gonna go on the other side of the house?
Or where the house is.
Got it. Thank you.
Right. Yes, sir.
How long has the present trailer been there?
Oh, since I was young. So, I'm gonna say twenty years, or twenty years, somewhere. I'm, I'm not quite sure, but I know it was there when I was young, and I'm 50-something. So, and actually, it was a different trailer there, and damage was done to that one, so they had that one removed and put another one there.
All right. Any other questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item?
Sir?
I'm just asking if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to address this item. If not, you're-
You guys coming up? You don't wanna speak?
No, I think they were just up here as representatives of the, of the people, of the petitioner.
That, actually, that's, the elderly gentleman is my uncle.
Okay.
And, and the young lady is, is my niece, so that's his great niece.
The only thing that I've got a problem with in your presentation is if you saw, the only problem I've got with your presentation is you keep calling 71-year-olds elderly.
I know, that's wrong.
And, and some of, some of us resent that.
No, well, I just like to respect my elders.
Thank you.
My uncle, my uncle helped raise me, and I've been around him all my life, and I, I suggested that he move home and get out of New York, because I just wanna see him happy, and I don't think that he should be paying rent when he could just be in his own house.
Welcome back to Montgomery.
Let me ask one, one more question, make sure I got this right. We've got a trailer on there right now.
Yes, sir.
And we're gonna put a second trailer on there.
Yes, sir.
But you're saying that there will be no more trailers on this other than those two? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
I mean, none in the future, other than those two?
Well, what if I wanna move home a couple of years from now? Am I allowed? Well, I have to go, I will have to go through this process again, correct?
Well, that's, you're, you're, you're answering the question kinda, kinda what, what I was foreseeing happening, and that's the reason I wanted to know if, in fact, it was only gonna be the two, then what we'd say is, if it was approved, that we'd do it for just two, two trailers, but, yeah.
Let me chime in here.
So, okay, yes.
Just a minute, Ms. Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason why we suggested Ag 1 is because for every mobile home that she wants to put on there, has to go to the Board of Adjustment for approval.
Right, right.
She can't just put as many as she wants to out there.
Okay.
So each one would have to get approved.
Okay, so, so we're not limiting anything, is what we're saying.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis, appreciate it.
Thank you. But I do have a question, I do have a question. So what's the criteria that they would use to make the decision? If she did wanna put a third or a fourth trailer out there, what is the, what's the criteria that she would have to meet if she did decide? It's 10 acres.
They normally look at the size of the lot, how many's are rented there currently. There really is no defined criteria.
The big question is, is it gonna perk?
Well, I mean, I bet-
Yeah, that's, that's our next thing that we wanted to get done. I was calling some companies to get the pricing of that, and I found a couple of companies that have some good pricing, and if you guys approve, then that, that, that will be done right away.
Well, it still gotta go to the Board of Adjustments, whether we approve it or not.
Yes.
And what, what does that consist of?
That's what I was, that's what I was asking.
It's another hearing, but it is not as long as a process as what we're going through now. It's just gonna be one more public hearing after this process.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right. Anybody else? If not, I'll call for the motion. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm owed approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion is approved. Thank you.
Item number two, by Goodwood Mills in Kaywood, requesting final approval of Antioch Plains Plat Number Two on the southwest corner of Highway 80 East and Smothers Road in the M1 District.
I went down, I'm sorry.
You can pull it down. You can pull it down. Come up to the mic, Judy.
Pull the microphone down.
Sorry.
Okay.
I could hear her, and I was like, okay, I'm Judy Jones from Goodwood Mills in Kaywood, and we're looking to replat this property from two lots into one. There's an existing facility there now for K-Lier, and they are expanding, and one of the processes that we've got to replat the property.
All right. Any questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? If not, a plat requires a vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, by the Broadway Group, requesting final approval of TBG Mobile Highway Plat Number One on the west side of Mobile Highway, approximately 830 feet north of Hyundai Boulevard in M1 District.
Yes, ma'am, you go ahead with your, just get the microphone to the point where you can speak.
Can you hear me?
Might have to talk closer in the mic.
Little bit, okay. My name's Melissa Ballard, I'm representing the Broadway Group out of Huntsville. We're looking to combine two existing parcels into one lot for a total of 3.4 acres for a commercial development.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? If not, this is a motion to approve a plat? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Motion is approved. Thank you.
Item number four, by ECE Survey and Design, representing Thomas Cruz, requests final approval of North Chase Plat Number Six on the southwest corner of Northern Boulevard and Contractors Drive in the M1 District.
My name is Thomas Cruz with Commercial Properties, requesting final approval of North Chase Plat Number Six.
Anybody on the planning commission have any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? If not, this is a motion to approve a plat? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Item number five, by Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, representing Calvin Baker, requests final approval of Greater Washington Park Plat Number 1A on the south side of Fifth Street, approximately 275 feet west of Tulane Avenue, in a R-60D district.
Afternoon, I'm Steve Hughes with Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors. We are asking for final approval of the Greater Washington Plat Number 1A.
Any questions from the planning commission? Anyone from the audience wish to address this item? Yes, ma'am. Oh, you're not coming forward, okay, no problem. Hearing none. This is a plat, requires a vote. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn, what did you vote?
I raised my hand.
No, Mr. Dunn?
Oh.
No, or abstain?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, motion carries.
Item number six, Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, representing Greg Cross, requesting final approval of Greg Cross Plat Number One on the east side of Butler Mill Road, approximately 1,200 feet south of Norman Bridge in Ag 1 District.
Once again, Steve Hughes with Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, asking for final approval of the Greg Cross Plat Number One.
Anyone in the planning commission have any questions about this item? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? If not, hearing none. Is there a motion? This is a plat, requires a vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item number seven, by Pilgrim Engineering, representing Stony Brook, requests final approval of Stony Brook Plat Number 10 on the north end of Overture Drive in APUD District.
My name is Sarah Heatherly, I'm with Louder New Homes. Pilgrim couldn't make it tonight, so I stepped in for him. We are requesting final approval of Plat 10 in Stony Brook.
So, basically, been operating out of this building for years, right?
Do what now?
Am I reading this right? You've basically been operating out of this business, out of this building for years? Am I reading that?
Oh, this is number six.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Seven, I missed it. Went the wrong thing, I'm sorry. All right. There's no bill in here, forget that. No wonder you were questioning me, all right. Any other questions from the planning commission members? If not, anyone in the audience wish to address this item?
I have a question. Have you talked to the people that live in that area about this development?
We actually just finished Plat 11, which connects, you actually come out of Plat 11 into Plat 10. We've had no complaints, and we're, I mean, those houses are selling as fast as we can build them.
But have you talked to them?
Talked about what's going on?
Yeah.
When they purchased the home, they know that that's a plat that's going to be developed. They're aware.
So this is plats, you have it, you have it starting?
The numbering sequence got off a little bit, but it's-
Okay. All right. Did I ask, does anyone in the audience wish to address this item? If not, this is a plat, requires a vote. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion approved.
Item number eight, by Pilgrim Engineering, requesting to rezone one lot at 10350 Highway 80 East from a FH zoning district to M1.
Okay. No one here for, from Pilgrimage, Pilgrimage, are you here? I don't see anybody.
She says she's not gonna do it.
I'm not here, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
You gonna do it?
We'll put it to the end of the-
I'll do pop a favor, can we table it to next month meeting?
It's gonna Adam Ickle go.
All right.
Item number nine, by Flowers and White Engineering, requesting final approval of First Baptist Church Plat Number Four on the west side of South Perry Street between Adams Avenue and Scott Street, and T-40 and T-5 zoning districts.
Good evening, I'm Kenneth White Jr. This first item is, like, like Tanya said, it's the First Baptist Church, the parking lot in the building to the north there. We're simply moving an interior lot line to the south to include, there's a wall that separates these two parcels. We're gonna put the wall solely on the northern track. That's the, that's the point of this replat.
So now it'd just be one plat?
No, it's two lots, it's just, we're putting the wall all on lot two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it kinda straddles the line, man.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? If not, this is a replat, so it needs a vote.
Motion to approve.
Excuse me?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion approved.
Item number, item number 11, Flowers and White Engineering, representing Hampstead, requesting final approval of Hampstead 1C on the north side of Mercer Street, approximately 120 feet east of Wigmore Street in the T-40 and T-5 districts.
Actually, it's item number 10, 10.
Don't mess me up anymore, I'm messed up.
I'm sorry, we need to go to 11.
What, it's still Hampstead?
Sir?
It's still this one? Okay. This, this plat, there was originally just one lot, that lot 12, and then, then 10 of that lot was always to put some attached products on that lot, and they're gonna sell those, so we need, we need to divide those into individual lots. They're gonna sell them as fee simple, so we need to divide that parcel 12 into that configuration. There'll be seven units on that kinda square. The reason we included the bigger parcel to the north, that's Lot 24, because it encompassed a little sliver to the north and south. Did you see where it says "old lot line" right there? There's a little sliver of land, which was a part of Lot 24, so that's why we included Lot 24 for this old purpose, is we took some acreage out of that. If that makes sense. Kinda, kinda hard to explain, but I can, if you have any other questions.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes, Kippe.
I'd like to know about the warrant approved on parcel eight for Lot Will.
Yeah, that, that, that is a non-buildable lot. There's an alley that goes in between from Mercer Street to the alley behind that, so Tanya, you kinda said that the warrant would be the proper thing to do on that, so it's really, it's a non-buildable lot, it just allows it. I guess in the smart code, I think there's an 18-foot minimum width.
Right.
And that's 12 foot, so it's really, it just accommodates a road, so there's no, it's a non-buildable lot, so it's just a road.
So, so the warrant allowed you to go from 18 to 12?
Right, right.
Just in that one?
Just for that one lot.
That one dimension, right there.
Right.
Yeah, and most of the warrants are dealing with kinda buildable lots, but that's a non-buildable lot, it's just an alley now.
So, so what's gonna happen in that little thumb that's digging out right there?
Right there, that's the, that's the road.
That's part of the road?
Yeah. You see the aerial?
Yeah, I got it now, yeah.
You see it right there? Yeah, that's the existing road, and existing connection between Mercer and that back alley.
What kinda road is that?
It's an asphalt road right now. We're gonna rip it up and put, um, pavers. It'll be a little nicer.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none. Is there, this is a plat and requires a vote. Is there a motion?
Tell move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Number 11, Flowers and White Engineering, representing Chris Urquhart, requests final approval of Urquhart Plat Number One on the southeast corner of Siebel's Road and Caddell Street in R-65 and FH zoning districts.
Thanks, Tanya. This is a simple triangular piece of land, and the owner owns both tracks of land, it's two parcels now, and we're simply replating it to have equal acreage for both parcels.
Is a portion of that lot floodplain?
I don't-
Mighty low.
I haven't checked, I don't think it is, 'cause it's not shown, I think I did look at it, it's close, Ms. Reeves, I don't think it is floodplain right now.
What is it being resoned for? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Clemmons, I can't understand.
I'm sorry. It says Siebel's Road and Caddell Street, R-65 residential, and you're requesting replating?
Yes, there's an existing house on the, the smaller track on the corner there, but he wanted to include a little bit more acreage for his house, if you see the area right there? And he owns the whole property, he just wanted to, to create a replat to have similar acreage for both parcels of land.
I was just trying to see exactly what that location was. Is it, is it in the middle of that, where the clearing is? I can't.
Do you see it right there?
Yeah. You know what I'm talking about, there are two sections, where they're, they're tearing trees down?
I, I'm not aware of it.
You're not aware of it? Okay.
And I'm not sure where the-
'Cause I can't-
And he owns the whole property. He just wanted to create a replat to have similar acreage for both parcels of land.
I was trying to see exactly what that location was. Is it in the middle of that, where the clearing is? I can't.
Do you see it right there?
Yeah. You know what I'm talking about. There are two sections where they're tearing trees down?
I'm not aware of it.
You're not aware of it? Okay.
And I'm not sure where the...
Because I can't really see, I can't really see on what it looks like.
They're not taking down trees on that lot?
No, you...
They're not taking down trees on that lot?
They're taking down trees on a lot, on Seebles Road, but that's not it?
No, that's not the lot.
It's not this lot?
So that area, is that area?
No, that's not the area that he helped for. There's some other people doing some other stuff.
Okay, but is he talking about the one on the corner there?
Yeah.
Where that forest place was?
Yeah, coming up Seebles toward Narrow Lane.
Yes.
Cadell is on the right-hand side.
Okay.
And you got a bunch of woods on...
I know where it is.
Right.
Yeah, I know where it is. Okay, all right, just want to be sure.
Yeah, he just wanted to add some acreage to the existing home. That's all it is.
But you created a second lot though, right?
There's two lots now. I'm just replating.
You're just moving the property line.
Correct.
But you actually have a separate, single lot too. Lot two doesn't have anything on it.
That's correct. It's rolling.
So it's just a separate lot, independent of lot number one?
There's two parcels there. Originally, they're not platted, but there's two parcels there. But we just created a plat, creating two lots. So in essence, two parcels turn into two lots, but they're just different shapes.
Now, is this R65 zone?
And flood hazard. And FH.
All right, and... Okay.
Are you... Everybody satisfied? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item?
It isn't flooded, Mr. Reeves. It isn't flooded.
Did I hear?
It is.
Are y'all still questioning something? I'm sorry.
Especially Lot Two.
Yeah, it is flooded. It'll be shown on plat before we record it.
All right. This is a plat. Requires a vote. Is there anyone? Make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion approved. Thank you.
Item number 12, Flowers and White Engineering, requesting approval of a revised master plan for property located on the south side of East Chase Lane approximately 400 feet east of Berry Hill Road in a PUD District.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a track of land written zone pud, and I think y'all have heard this the last planning commission, to do a revised pud to allow these townhomes and these 50-foot lots that are planned here. This is just the, this is the master plan that accompanies that rezoning request. The change of use, I guess. It's the change of use of the...
The setbacks.
And the setbacks that are shown.
All right. I don't... This is not the rezoning. This is just the plating. I'm assuming the neighbors are...
This is the master plan.
This is just the master plan, right? You're not to the dealing with any neighbors yet or anything?
My developer has met with, I think, Wind Lakes to the east there.
Yeah.
But that's right. It's the... Y'all heard the rezoning, I guess, the rezoning request.
Right.
Sorry. It's not rezoning. It's a rezoning, but it's a use change.
Right.
Pud to a pud, but the use is different. Last...
That's... Yeah, I agree with you. But you know, I don't think you call that a...
What kind of comments did you get from the Wind Lakes folks? You said they met?
Yeah, Lee, do you remember?
Because you got a lot of density going in.
Remember the comments the Wind Lakes had to Jeff? Do you remember what comments the Wind Lakes folks had to Jeff? They had a good meeting. Yeah.
I can't hear you.
I just didn't hear what he said.
Yeah, Jeff, my client, did meet with Wind Lakes to the east, and they had no comments. That was before last month's meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Wait a minute, the last month's meeting was for the rezoning?
Correct.
Change of use. Correct.
No, it was rezoning.
It was the rezoning, changing the use. This is just changing setbacks.
But when you presented this to them last month, did they see the site plan?
They did.
In terms of how the lots were laying out and the density that's coming in there?
Yes.
Okay.
My only concern was that the neighbors are kept up to date with what's going on.
Yeah, we've had the same layout.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anybody else have any questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Yes, if you'll come forward and...
I'm here as Judy Jones, plain. One of my questions I had, I saw the write-up today, and my concern is, we work out there. And right there to the west, right down the corner of Berry Hill, there's gonna be a hotel. It's already, and right there behind, say, right above that, next to our office, is the new auto owner's new facility. It's gonna be a regional facility. My problem is, what about... I noticed that traffic didn't have any comments, but you can't hardly get out of there right now. And so I just don't know, and then you get all these houses in there. That's my concern, is it's already a nightmare. Because everybody cuts through there to get out, so... Has, was that addressed by anybody, Tanya, about a traffic light?
I think that's gonna come...
Pull that down a little bit, so you make sure they can hear you pick it up for audio.
With the plat, right?
At their plat?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I want to ask her a question. You say you work out there. Do you live out there as well? Okay. And... I have a similar concern based on the density of what's going in over here and how it's gonna contribute to the traffic that goes on to, was that East Chase Lane?
Kippee, if you need to talk, she needs to come back to the... They can't pick her up from out there. She needs to come back to the podium.
Yeah, you should have sat down too soon. I said, after looking at this, when I got my packet, I was under the same... I had the same concern that you just expressed about the volume of traffic that would be going on to East Chase Lane based on this development. And I don't know if you got the answer to your question or not about...
It may, this might come up later as far... Not, I'm not here to bash the development. It's just I'm asking about, you know, traffic-wise, is there a plan to put a traffic light there? That's all.
And I guess, I'm with you. How is this being calculated? Based on the volume of cars? Has the traffic study been done to kind of indicate what we're... I'm not asking you. I'm just asking Kenneth maybe. Traffic study been done to feel what kind of impact that this is gonna cause at this point?
We're just in the rezoning stage. We have a starting engineer playing, but the traffic would definitely be, the traffic engineer would definitely look at this. They have looked at the preliminary plat. Is that right, Tanya?
Yes.
Yeah, did they have any comments?
No.
Traffic didn't?
No.
Prior use was office institutional, which probably is very similar in traffic with what I're proposing right now. So it's, yeah, he could build a pretty good facility there in the use that was, that we've tried to rezon from. So, you know, it also have two means of egress towards Berry Hill and offaly to the east as well. So it's, I haven't heard any comments, but again, we haven't started the design.
They didn't have any. The traffic engineer didn't have any.
So you're putting 107 lots out there?
Seventy, and that's correct, yes. Also, this is a, this is a private right of ways, could be gated. So that, if that means anything to you, Kippee, but it's not a public road.
I'm just concerned about the traffic and how this is gonna impact the current flow out there, that's all.
Again, it is good that we do have two means of egress to the west and to the east. But again, it was office institutional use before, and we, probably not much difference in traffic than what I'm doing now and what was planned originally.
So that just means all the traffic is not gonna go to East Chase Lane they're gonna go to? Because since they won't have a hard time getting out, they're gonna go?
There's a light on the right side, you know, right now.
Right.
And Lee just told me, he had a letter from Wind Lakes saying they didn't have any comments on this rezoning. Yeah. Well, I think they would be from office institutional to a residential product that's very similar to what they have right now.
All right. Any other questions? Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none. This is a master plan. This does require a vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? What's that, 62?
60.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Last item. Flowers and White Engineering, representing Providence Partners, requesting preliminary approval of Grantham overall on the south side of East Chase Lane, approximately 400 feet east of Berry Hill Road in a PUD District.
All right. Go ahead.
This is the preliminary plat for the subdivision, basically placing the lots where I proposed and the streets where I proposed them.
All right.
Hearing to the master plan that y'all just...
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the planning commission?
I got a question for Tanya. On this wording, on this change.
Yeah.
Says A Street starts at Street C. It's not what the map shows.
It could be an error. Let me see.
Shows it's starting at East Chase Lane.
No, it says Street A starting at Street C and ending in the cul-de-sac. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That's talking about, from that point where Street A intersects Street C, we're starting right there, going into the cul-de-sac is 840 feet long. Not the entire Street A.
So at the intersection of A and C?
Yes, from that point...
That's the starting point.
Yes, to the cul-de-sac.
Does that explain it, Cruz?
Yeah.
You okay with it?
It does.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address it? Think it's the same discussion we had earlier. If not, this is a plat. Requires a vote. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, what's 67? Are you opposed?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion, Cruz, I wasn't sure what your vote was. Motion carries. 71. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let's see, what have we got? Election of officers? Is that all that's left?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Meeting other than election of officers is adjourned. All right.